Ready, Sharon? All right. Good evening. This is the Select Board meeting for Thursday, December 7th. Call this meeting to order at 6:15. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. This meeting is being recorded for the home audience. Reminder, winter parking ban is in effect through April 1st. No parking on any streets between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Vehicles in violation will be ticketed and towed at the owner's expense. Also, snow and ice removed from driveway sidewalks or private property. Should not be plowed, shoveled, or blown across any public way, street, or roadway. Brad, would you read us off the warrants, please?
Sure. FY 2411 accounts payable $862,907.23. FY 2411 payroll $197,755.35. FY 2411 withholding $96,516.68.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, and on to the agenda. Agenda item number one, the retraction of Assistant Animal Control Officer Ashley Ledger. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Thank you. All right. So, this was, this matter was brought to us by Cassie Buffum, the Animal Control Officer. I've conveyed my apologies, but I'll apologize again. This is probably not the most appropriate agenda, way of expressing the agenda item. Is that, but Cassie was, this should have been brought up differently, but it's sufficiently accurate. We don't need to change it. Ashley has, you, actually, you talked to her, Kelly. Has she, has she asked us to withdraw her appointment, or has she assented to it?
Yeah.
Yes. The one that was forwarded to the board through was forwarded to the board. But it's in your packet if it wasn't. She did volunteer to do the position, but because of her full-time job, she hasn't been able to respond when she's been called. And she didn't have the time to take the mandatory classes, so she's comfortable with the withdrawal, with the decision of her appointment. She wanted the board to understand that it wasn't a lack of interest or desire to do the job. It's, her availability is not, because the calls are random, right? She's been called a few times when she was available, but most of the time she's at work, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what happens when you're in a volunteer position and you have to do something and get paid to keep the house in repair.
Driving the ambulance to the hospital, sorry, you gotta get it going. Not a good plan. So, please focus on the ambulance. We appreciate that.
We're okay with that kind of prioritization.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yes, I can't, I can't argue with that. Would it, okay, then, all right, so we'll need to post this position. If we, actually, if we, if we just, what do we want to do? Do we want?
Well, typically volunteers would put it on the website and we put feelers out to see. It's not an advertisement. It's not a job that we advertise because it's not a, it's a stipend. It's a once-a-year annual stipend. It's not a paid position.
Right.
So, we'll follow the normal course of posting on the website and reaching out to other areas and feeling out, see if somebody's interested in taking the position.
I'm just, part of me is thinking, does it make sense to leave her in there just in case she can do something for us, or do we just want to take her out now? Okay.
You shouldn't post it until it's written, so.
Okay, that's, I could see the possibility.
Your option is, you could say, hey, it'll, it's, her appointment ends up, say, a month from now and then post it and go for that. That's your other option.
Yeah, or just to say, it's like, or if she'd be willing to, it's like, if it made sense, a position could be posted while the current occupant says, "I'll stay until you find someone."
Except that they can't respond to the call.
Yeah, I know. That's, I know, I'm working, I'm working through it.
But yeah, if you want to relax, you have, we have that option.
Mm-hmm, okay. You guys have any preference here, or?
Do we have the date that we voted on the appointment? Because you could just rescind it.
I don't know, Karen, providing the chairman. No, she did not. It's an annual appointment, so it would have been, it would have been June.
It would have been this year, so I don't, I'll go ahead and make a motion to rescind the vote of June 2023 to appoint Ashley Ledger as Assistant ACO.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of rescinding the appointment of Ashley Ledger to the, as Assistant Animal Control Officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so, Kelly, would you, would you get things moving to post the, post that for the replacement and ask Kathy and any, not Kathy, Cassie, or anyone, and anyone else appropriate to start finding, if we could find a replacement?
Okay. Now, I do have a question about that relative to this. Do we, do we pay for their courses if they accept the position? Or are they responsible?
No, it comes out of their, it comes out of their account because it comes out of their expense account because it is mandatory.
Right, okay. So, that'd be something I would include in the, probably in the posting.
That training is included?
Training will be provided if needed. Or put it, or you can frame it up in a different way. Must be willing to complete the training within X amount of time.
I think that'll help us locate a candidate a little faster if they understand.
Yeah, and I'll find out what the mandatory, because it's, the state requires the training to be done by a certain amount of time.
Yeah. Is, does the Assistant Animal Control Officer have the same training requirements as the primary Animal Control Officer?
Yes.
All right, anything else on agenda? Item number one? All right, number two, Recreation Committee appointment of Mark Harris to the Recreation Committee. Let's see, do we know how, how full is Recreation Committee at the moment? Do we know?
I do not.
Okay. I will probably, I will see the basketball coordinator on Saturday. I will ask him. I'm just curious. I mean, it's good that if they, no matter how many openings they have, it's always good to fill as many of them as they can. All right, so I will take, I'll take a motion. So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of appointing, let's see, and all in favor of appointing Mark? Mark Harris, thank you. I wanted to make sure it wasn't Mike Harris. Mark Harris, the Recreation Committee, through June 30th, 2024. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is signed by the clerk. All right, number three, appointment of Aiden Crawford to the Emergency Medical Squad. Term to expire on June 30th, 2024. And this is at the request of Chief LaFleur.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any, any discussion? All in favor of appointing Aiden Crawford to the Emergency Medical Squad, term ending in June 30th, 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Another one for you to sign, Beth. And you thought clerk was going to be easy.
Been there, done that.
All right. And now, item number four, Cultural Council resignations. Fallen like flies. We have resignations from, let's see, Dory Nifert, effective at the end of the year, Jessica Clark, effective immediately, Noah Clark, effective immediately, Damian Sargent, let's see, as of the end of the year, and Kate Uli, as of the end of the year.
And make a motion to accept all those resignations with regrets?
Second.
All right, all in favor of accepting the resignations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see.
How many does that leave us on Cultural Council?
As of the end of the year?
One.
One. Bill Simpson Senior.
There'll be one on December 3rd of this year.
Wow.
Yes, that's.
There are two others who are interested in being appointed.
Yes, I heard they were.
Is that 350 burnout?
Those are different.
Oh, okay.
Those, oh, no, I don't think so.
Yeah. Given that we discussed the resignations, is the membership of the Cultural Council in play agenda-wise?
Sure.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're doing that right. So, we've got, we've got two, so my thought is that we've got a, Cultural Council did summer concerts, Memorial Day, and they did some community events, Pumpkin Fest, the tree lighting. And I think that's it. That's all that comes to mind off the top of my head. So.
How many positions did they have available?
It's a good question.
Because I had talked to Jean and suggested, you know, maybe just having five.
We don't have an actual town set number.
Yeah.
The Cultural Council is allowed to be up to 22. The town is supposed to decide how many members they would like it to be. I don't believe that Brookfield has that in place at this time, which is a problem because if it can't be up to 22, what's a problem? So, that is something you want to consider putting in place, a number of. And if you have more people who volunteer than you have seats for, there's no reason making.
You can still volunteer, right.
And how, or.
And we can give credit in the annual report.
Alternates.
Can we look into whether we can do alternates for Cultural Council? And if we can't currently, I think if we wrote our bylaw to allow alternates, we could actually fix it at the next town meeting.
I don't think you need a bylaw. I think you can do it as a, the board will set the number. But I'll check on that as well.
That would be great.
And then also, I was talking to Jean on Sunday at the tree lighting, and she mentioned that she has some, that there is some Cultural Council property at her house and that she was looking to get it back to the town and out of her house.
Yeah, I brought that up because she told me that as well. I believe Bill Simpson Senior has stuff at his house, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he's, he's still on the council. And so, my thought was, I know that they maintain some storage in the basement of the, of the Historical Commission House, the library annex. And then also, there may be some space here. But my thought is, we should probably decide where we, where we want to put that.
Wouldn't that be more of Town Hall Improvement Committee to decide where to put it in the Town Hall? Versus us?
That's not an improvement.
No.
Yeah, it's up to us to tell them where they can put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up to us to find them storage space. She said it was just a couple, it was like a couple tubs, like this big or so. They're not, I don't think it's an inordinate amount of space.
We're probably going back and forth about where the things that belong to the Cultural Council are going to be housed, as opposed to being just sitting on the stage. They have another landing, if you're facing the stage on the left side, another story out. There is a corresponding landing on the right side, so they could use that. It doesn't have a door, but it was open anyway, so.
Yeah, it's not like it was locked up anywhere.
Correct. So, that's, that's an option, is to use that landing on the opposite side.
I think that's, I think that's a good starting point. If it becomes a problem, we can revisit it and move it somewhere else.
Yep.
All right, good. And then I will, I will reach out to, I'll try and remember to reach out to Jean and Bill and just see how.
But they probably can't do it anytime soon if they're up there painting currently, right now, right?
Well, as it turns out, that's one of the reasons we're working with them now is because we need it off the stage. So, Jean was asked via email if she would just let the Town Hall Improvement Committee know what was saving, what they want to save, and what was garbage because they're getting a dumpster and they're going to be throwing away all the extra wood that's up there that's of no use and broken things that have been put up there, for lack of a better place to put them. So, when, when it comes time to, right now, we have everything in the center of the room on, on the stage. When it comes time to paint the center of the room, the stage area, all that has to move.
Gone.
So, that's why we're working with them. So, it should be done within the next couple of weeks, actually. Two to three weeks.
Let's see, do you think they're going to be switching to the middle of the room before Christmas? Or is that going to be?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay.
No, no. They, they have today scraped, primed, muddied, sanded, muddied, sanded, back end. They will be priming a second coat, and then they start on the windows and the trim. So, that's going to be a process.
Okay.
Because it all has to be sanded and then re-eurthened. Where they're re-eurthening it, because some of the pieces up there, like all of the actual panes, those frames are all painted, so those are going to be painted. Sections between the windows are painted in some spots. In some spots, they're eurthening. So, we're going to make them consistent where the flat part's going to be painted, but the face will be eurthening. The window frames themselves will be painted, but the outer, the housing, the casing will be, will be eurthening.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, it's going to be at least a couple of weeks before they need to move into the center of the room and, and they're not moving to the center of the room until they're done with the walls, the windows, and then the archways of the ceiling, because they're also going to be seen.
Okay. The reason I ask is that if there's a, if, if some things could wait until Christmas break, I could probably arrange for a couple scouts to log some community service hours, helping move things around up there.
That would be lovely. I would suggest a report made with the Town Hall Improvement Committee. Were we supposed to get one of these notice from the county?
All right. I will, I will talk to Bill Simpson Junior as his daughter is one of the scouts that would probably wind up helping.
Well, that'll make it easier, right?
Yeah. Okay.
So, given the description of what the work they've done so far, I feel better about the price because it sounds like they're doing it properly.
They are. They're, they're an extremely reputable company. Do most, a lot of historical renovations in the Long Meadow area. So, it's, they do very high-end work. And they came in 23 months ago. So, I'm very, I'm very pleased with the work they've done so far.
Okay, let's see, still on agenda, agenda item number four, we have also a resignation from Barbara Clancy from the Library Board of Trustees, effective, this was effective September 13th, and so.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept Barbara's resignation with regrets.
Second.
All right, all in favor of accepting Barbara's resignation with regret, please say aye.
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 I assume we're sending notes off to everybody?
Yeah, I'm writing down letters to each of them.
All right, moving on, number five, common victualer licenses. And we have, excuse me, licenses for White's Landing, Tip Top, and Dollar General. My understanding is that Oak Home is, will be at the next meeting.
That is correct.
All right.
Make a motion that we sign the 2024 common victualer licenses for White's Landing, Tip Top, and Dollar General.
Second.
All right, all in favor, is there any discussion? Seeing as there's none, all in favor of signing the victualers licenses for the three listed companies, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda item number six, discharge of lien on real estate, 7 Gay Road. Kelly, is this another one of those loans that the town just has an interest and they earn out by staying in their house?
I heard the beginning of that, but I didn't hear the rest.
We, there have been other liens that we have discharged, and I'm asking if this is like those where it is a, it is a loan program and they, they pay off the loan, or they, they?
It's a lien that reduces for the number of years that they're here. But if they sell, then that reduction very, it eventually knows out. Then they have to pay back whatever that amount was on that year.
Okay.
So, it's the very same type of, usually, it's, it's a housing, it's housing money. It's not our money, it's housing money.
Right.
So, this is somebody that stayed for a portion of the time?
Yes, they only stayed for, I think, three years. Right at the three-year line, or close to it.
So, wait a second, isn't this printed up in reverse then? So, oh, so they actually paid off the 17, 325. Got it, okay.
Yes, they paid, they paid the amount that they had to, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to discharge it in until we have the funding, so you wouldn't assume this unless they had paid the bill.
Yeah, so these are people, they didn't stay long enough to completely earn it out. They just paid their, they paid what they had to pay. And so, now they're clear. Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to sign this.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of signing the discharge of lien for the property at 7 Gay Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and there's only one, there's only one place to sign it. Am I, should I sign it, or should I get the? Should I, should I get the authorization to the board? Or if the board's already agreed, can I just sign?
They just voted yes, then.
We just voted yes, then.
Well, sometimes we all need to sign, I don't know.
Are there three spots there? There might be, there might be one notary for each one of you.
Today is the seventh day of December, 2023. And Kelly, are you doing the notary honors?
Sure.
All right, because there's a spot for a notary there.
Does he need to prove he's a?
I think I can get a person in line.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the flag policy as written.
Second.
All right, that's fine. Just for the, for the, for the home audience, I'd like to say that the, we're voting to adopt a policy that would allow the flying only of the following flags on the town flag poles, the United States flag, Commonwealth of Massachusetts flag, the town of Brookfield flag, flags of the, official flags of the various branches of the military services of the United States of America, and the POW MIA flag, in that no other flags will be put on the town flag poles. Any questions on the policy? Nope, all right, all in favor of the policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is adopted. All right, minutes. We have minutes for December 9th, 2018, I'm sorry, October 9th, 2018, October 26th, 2023, open session, November 2nd, 2023, November 7th, 2023, open session, and November 16th, 2023. I'll take a motion to approve those, or?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion or concerns on those minutes? All right, seeing as there's none, all in favor of approving the minutes of the meeting so listed, please say aye.
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 All right.
All right. Hey, we have a police report from 8:23.
Hey, do you have a question about this?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I'll make a motion to acknowledge it.
Okay.
So, oh, make a motion.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Second.
All right, thank you.
All right, so the discussion, is, is there a reason why we're getting August and it's December?
My understanding, I, I think part of it is that Chief Blanchard says that he is at the mercy of getting the reports from dispatch up in New Braintree.
And they can't just pull this out of some computer system, not get the end of the month?
I, I don't know. Or I, or maybe getting someone to actually do the pulling and send it is a manual task, and it sometimes takes a little while for that to get to him.
Okay, anyway.
I think if they pulled it out of their own system, they would be phenomenal, I would have to imagine. Because it's not going to create a list like this.
No, I understand.
So, that might be one of the reasons he's getting it from dispatch.
Right.
And they may have something going on at the end, push it to him.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor of acknowledging the police report for August of 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, skating rink on the Common. I was hoping Rec would be here.
Do you want a motion, or do we want to discuss first?
Um, let's discuss first. Because I'm, I'm inclined to, it's like, given what happened last year, I was hoping Rec would be here to talk to their plans and, and talk to the concerns from, that Cultural Council has raised.
We don't have a Cultural Council anymore.
No, 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 technically, we do. No, technically, technically, well, technically, we do because they haven't all resigned at the end of the year, but I know what you mean.
Okay.
So, you actually have, I believe, four remaining members in the board?
Yes, yes. I think we have four, until the end of the year, we have four members who are active, and then three of them, their resignations become effective at the end of the year. It's like, and I understand that there's, I understand that the, there is no Cultural Council to, I'll say, enforce their concerns, but I think that we do want to understand what they are and at least have Rec say, yeah, it's like, yep, it's like, yep, that's a valid concern, we're going to do this, or we're not sure that's a valid concern. And so, part of, part of me just says, because I'm curious where they're, where they want to put it. Because I heard that Rec may have said that they'd be willing to put it behind the gazebo, though I believe there's a dip there, so I'm not sure how well-suited that is for their need.
I don't, I don't, what is the, if I may inquire, what is it made of? Because water is fluid, it fills in and is self-leveling. So, what's, what, I don't know.
It's a.
You need it to not be like.
Well, yeah, you don't want it to be at this angle because it'll be really thick over here, you're probably going to run through with your skates over here. But, but if it's going to dip, depending on, I mean, it's a 40-foot, it's a, it's an ice skating.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was a fan of putting it on the green last year. It just didn't happen, but, so, and I know that there's, I guess there were concerns about it, but it seems like it's a, if we, if we have the, if the Rec Committee has the equipment, they have the volunteers to put it in, or managing to have like a mild enough winter, they can still get it properly secured just about anywhere because we're not waiting until the ground is frozen or, and, or they've already got snow on the ground. And that would be the time to get it down, to get it properly installed.
If you choose to allow this, can you do it with the stipulation that it has to be maintained by the Rec? Somebody's got to come up and. Maintained by the Rec, and somebody's got to come up and, and take care and clean up the common.
I think there's.
Make sure they don't move the benches.
Yeah, there's two, there's two stipulations, one, don't move the benches, because the last time we moved the benches, the benches got broken.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't mind the benches.
So.
And I mean, that should come, I don't know what they have for budget, but I mean, does that come out of their budget?
It didn't, actually, I believe Mr. Simpson, he'd crawl out of his own pocket.
Yeah, so that shouldn't have, that shouldn't have come out of Rec.
That was a timing thing. But it was coming out of the cultural council one, one, either, either that, and I, I think the one.
Because when I talked to Jean, I mean, the other concern was damage to the gazebo.
Yeah, these people are walking on it with their skates. Will it fit in that big sp, you know, the gazebo, if we come up this street here, right, and the gazebo is here, will it fit in the space between this street and the gazebo?
I don't think there's space between the gazebo and one forty-eight or Common Street.
No, it has to be between the gazebo and Lincoln.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be either north or south of the gazebo, towards Central Street or towards Lincoln Street.
That's what I was actually asking.
Right, or the other question is, can it fit where we do the Memorial Day, where we actually do the speaking for the Memorial Day on the other side?
I don't think that's flat enough, the mall. I think the mall has, rolls too much too soon. I would be.
I don't think that's, I don't think this side of the flagpole rolls too much.
But it's something for them to explore.
Yeah, I mean.
Please they put it there.
Yeah, maybe we defer this and have a meeting with them, or one person have a meeting with one person on the rec and try to talk it out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay to saying they can, if they want to put it on the south end of the mall, like just north of Central Street where it cuts through. If they can put it there and they think it works, I'm good with that.
I think that would be a good spot for it, because it keeps people away from the gazebo.
Yeah.
Keeps the skates away from the damage from that.
I seem to remember last year saying that they think that, that it wasn't level enough to use that, but it's definitely.
No, no, I think the problem was, is that by the time we made any decision, it, I think that it was not, I don't think we really even put that forward as an option. I think it was, the cultural council said thou shalt not put it on the mall. If I remember correctly, I could be wrong, I don't remember.
I don't remember that.
We could go back and watch it.
We could.
So, but, you know, put, if you, if you choose to allow them to put the, the skating rink somewhere in the center area, it's, it's okay to also say, this is, this is what we expect, and if it's not done that way, we're going to go back next year.
Yeah.
You know, that's something that you can do, if you want to.
Mm-hmm.
Say, we, we anticipate this type of, of maintenance and policing of the area as far as, you know, I'm thinking garbage, you know, trash.
Yeah, that's, I, I, I think the expectation is that they will maintain the, maintain the rink in, in good working order and generally good visual appeal, and maintain, and keep the common in a reasonably clean, I'm not sure what the right words are, but not allow the use of the rink to become, make the common become a, a trash pit. I don't know how else to say it.
Yeah, and, and to set it up in a way that minimizes the risk of physical damage to, to town property, which is why we want to try to get it as far away from the gazebo as possible.
It sounds like you could compromise a couple foot there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, should we say we make a motion to approve it, subject to?
If that's your choice, yes, you can absolutely make that motion.
Do we?
I mean, unless you have a clear way to make a motion. I'm up for anything.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we.
Yeah, you, you want a minute to make sure you get all your points down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me actually write it out, because this one might be somewhat complicated, but I'll try to do it simple.
Kelly, you're asking a lot there.
Yeah, I was going to say. All right.
I'll be calm.
Hopefully, your artwork is pretty good, Jean. Yeah, upload it to ChatGPT, it's like, it was just, I can't read this scratch.
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize. Uh, the installation. Of the ice rink. With the following provisions. One, preferred site.
I mean, this really comes down to the select board to police any damage or, you know, trash being out there and stuff like that.
How so?
I mean, if there's trash out there and it's left out there, who's going to tell?
Could you just look at your own?
I could.
Second floor, please.
I could even walk around, even, so long as the sidewalks aren't prepared.
Well, I think the, the onus of the, of the responsibility is going to be put on the.
Maintenance goes on.
On Rec Committee.
Yeah, and if we notice.
But I've been, but it's a select board that's going to tell them like, hey.
You're not following.
You're not following, right.
Yeah, if we get complaints or you see something out there, I'm sure people will let us know if it's not being maintained properly.
Secondary site option, is it south? Side, what do you consider the area that's the, got the gazebo on it?
This, it looks like the middle.
There is a name for it.
I know there is a proper name.
Right, I don't know what it is.
I'm just going to say of common, in front of library. Let's see here. Rec Committee assumes responsibility to any property damage that's approximate to the rink usage.
Town property damage.
What's that?
Town property damage.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Due to skating. Skater activities. Including.
No, there were, there were some, I'm reading, there are some recommendations here, I don't know if we want to heed to those, or wait till an event happens.
What were they?
Uh. We hope you will at least not allow it in front of the gazebo, and be sure there is a bench provided for putting skates on and not using the gazebo for this, there should be signage, cameras, maybe parent supervision, and then I saw somewhere else about there was supposed to be signs, or they talked about putting signs, use at your own risk. That was in a prior year comment.
I like the providing the bench adjacent to the rink for skate changing.
Yeah, I was, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up.
I mean, maybe. They should have like a rope with like a hook on it to keep people from, you know, to discourage people from going onto the.
Gazebo.
Gazebo. I don't know what you call it.
Yeah, yeah, that's just a sign saying, no skates, or, there might be better wording for that, that's almost a challenge.
Well, I'm just. I'm going to say or words to that effect.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I've got so far is, we authorize the installation of the ice rink with following provisions, preferred site is the south side of the mall, north of Central Street, secondary site option, sou, south side.
North of Central Street or north of Lincoln Street?
North of Central Street, primary position.
Oh, yes, got it.
Right, would be north of Central Street.
On the mall.
Yep, south of Flagpole. Because that's the only area I think that's actually flat enough anyway, is that.
Right.
Right. Uh, secondary site option is the south side of the common in front of the library, Rec Committee assumes responsibility for town property damage due to skating or skater activities, including but not limited to skate damage to the gazebo. Bench damage. Is there any other types of damage we're concerned about?
I think the gazebo and the benches were the.
Were the primary.
With the primary damage, or the complaints were that the, like, people throwing sticks onto the.
Is that operated by your company?
No.
Maybe we should.
Do you want one of them? Do they operate in the cold? I don't know.
They do operate in the cold, most people won't use it. They stay pretty clean.
I'm just thinking of other people.
There's a, you know, uh, fo, folks are not as hardy to use outhouses as they were once, once in a day, so. Uh, no movement of existing benches, provide a bench adjacent to the rink for skate changing, signage will be posted indicating no skates in the gazebo or words to that effect, as well as skate at own risk.
Do you have anything about them maintaining the rink in good order and maintaining the visual appeal of the, of the location?
Uh, how about just, Rec Committee will be responsible for policing the area.
Doesn't it say maintenance or?
Yeah, it did say maintenance.
Should we make a motion to stay on maintenance?
Uh.
It's going to be a three-page motion.
It is.
They're small pages.
But if you leave it broad enough, you can.
They are small pages, and I'm writing with big handwriting.
Sometimes.
Rec Committee.
At least it's not a five-page article in the Ward book.
Support. Just policing of the area, I would say. They're not going to understand policing, that's a term.
Yeah.
Need something specific?
Maintain, maintain general, maintain general cleanliness and visual appeal? Why say it in one word, we can say it in five?
I know. I just put I E, trash removal.
That's what we want.
And. Okay, I E, trash removal and any other types of maintenance. Anything else, any other conditions?
Um. No, I don't think so, I mean, I, I think, I was thinking to add something about, um, just, if it becomes a nuisance, if it becomes a nuisance or an eyesore, we can revoke it, but it's like, I think that's, doesn't need.
That's implied.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, like, that's what I was getting to, it doesn't need to be spelled out.
Though, once those things are down, you ain't getting it up. You're not getting it out of there. Once you've got, once you've got six inches of ice and, and frozen ground, it's not coming out until it fogs them.
Just means they can't play.
You could, you could close it, and then you could tell them you'll never do it again, you'll never get it again, but you're not getting it out of there.
Yeah. But I mean, if it's, there may be things to do to make sure to like drain it so that it's, it's there, but there's no rink to skate on, making it a, less of an attraction to the people, to people causing the nuisance, we'll deal with it when it comes up, if it comes up. I mean, I see your point, it's like, if you can't get it up, then you can't get it up. And next year, they're probably going to put it on the field that they just had leveled anyway.
Yeah.
I think that's their intent.
It is the intent, so.
And so they may want some.
Okay.
benches for that anyway.
So that's my motion.
Second.
All right, all right, I think we finished all the discussion of the motions, any further discussion, any more concerns? All right, all in favor of the, of the motion to allow Rec to place a, an ice rink on the mall or common in all of the glory that we have already discussed, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right. And now that we've done that, it's never going to get cold enough to really freeze and be usable, probably. All right.
Welcome to the new normal.
Mm-hmm. And town common usage authority, all right. My understanding is that the, that in the past, the select board has delegated scheduling authority for the common to the cultural council, given that the, we're looking at the, the cultural council is either going to become defunct, or at best, there's going to be a severe discontinuity in experience, I'm thinking that it may make sense for us to, at least as a temporary measure, withdraw all delegation of authority for scheduling and reservation of the common, and arrogate that back to ourselves, until the cultural council situation settles itself out, and then we, and then once, once the, it's, once we know that it's up and running again, we can delegate to it, or we can decide what we want to do then, is my, is my thinking, what do you guys think? Because right now, I don't like the idea of the cultural council having authority, but no one there to wield it, I think it makes more, I think it's cleaner for us to pull it back.
So I think that depends on, so we have four people now, three that will resign by the end of the year, two that are interested in.
Yeah, three for January, from what I understand. If those people's names are brought forward.
So I don't object to pulling it back for now, since we don't know that we'll have even a three-person committee come January first.
Mm-hmm, well, so there was this, what was the intention of this policy in the packet here?
This policy is from two thousand and twelve, it was never actually adopted, because it was later determined by the chair at that time that it was overreaching.
Right.
And I asked Karen to put together anything that she could find related to attempts at delegating this to the, anybody, just so you have a history of it, so that's why it's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a policy the board considered in the past and did not adopt, so, it's, it's informational, I mean, so at the moment, I believe we don't have a policy on the common, and my thought also was, it's like, I think it's only been delegated to the cultural council, but just on the off chance that it's been, it's gone elsewhere also, it makes sense for us to sort of pull it all back, now we know it's only with us, and then we can resume delegating when, when the opportunity presents itself.
This really isn't an overreach.
Yeah, I was going to ask, why is it considered overreaching?
Yeah, and, and.
That's the gentleman who decided it was.
And, and we can, and we can certainly consider a, a policy for the use of the common going forward, I just didn't think that was something that needed to be considered now, since we're going into the winter, and therefore, I just didn't think to push that, that angle.
So, and I think the only thing I would do is I would take this, this policy and say, you know, on that first bullet where it says events on the common and the mall, to continue to be scheduled through the cultural council after the semicolon, in the event that there's not a, a, a quorum, that the cultural council is not quorum capable of that responsibility to revert to the board selectively, even though that's just implied, since it's a committee that we appoint, you can just put it in there explicitly.
Yeah.
And so that way, we don't have to, we don't need to vote to say, hey, we're going to take the power back, we can just make it our policy that, hey, when we have a cultural council, cultural council decides, in the event that we don't have a cultural council, maybe, in, say, the event that the cultural council has fewer than five members and can't provide a quorum, that we want to be very explicit.
Yeah, my, my concern with that, though, is that if it bounces back and forth automatically, what happens to, what happens if the cultural council schedules an event for, say, a third party, not for them, and then they go defunct, it's like, we, there needs to be a, when the authority reverts back to us, the, the calendar, the calendar, we have to have visibility into what's on the calendar.
I mean, you have experience with other towns, what do they do? I mean, you have experience with other towns. What do they do with their commons? Who is in charge? Or do they just have a common committee?
Neither. The, the three towns that I've worked in prior did not have a common.
Well, that made it easy, didn't it?
Holland does not have a common. We have an athletic field, but we don't own it. It's, it's actually, um, belongs to Hitchcock Academy, which is why it's called Hitchcock Field.
Oh, really?
Stop using it for sports, it reverts back to the heirs. It was a gift.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And, um...
I did it either, you're right.
Yeah.
So-
So there are no commons. However, the cultural councils in every other town that I've worked in meets three times a year, they get their grant money, they meet again to discuss the applications, they award the grants, and they come back another year. You guys are blessed-
We have a very active-
With how active the cultural council is here. But it's not the norm, so, um...
Yeah, so I mean, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm saying, I think that the policy as written is actually pretty good, which I find it interesting that it was defined as overreaching, because the selectmen actually don't take any possession of any authorization here, other than
Vehicles.
You know, other than control of vehicles being on the common, right?
And struct- like, you know, structure.
Yeah, directing a structure. So, I mean, that's not, this doesn't seem particularly excessive, and I think if we just put in there kind of like a, a little bit of weasel language around, you know, if we don't have a, you know, a sufficiency of a cultural council to, to do the work, and I think we may wanna establish, maybe have a bullet here, that the, that the, um, select board will provide administrative support via our, our assistant to maintain a calendar, you know, a common calendar for someone to do the work.
Obviously, wasn't the idea, these documents are to adopt this, and that you could adopt it minus the first bullet, subject to a mandate, when you, when you figure out what you want the first one or two bullets to be. Cultural council will continue.
Right.
Um, and the next bullet, in the event cultural council does not have a quorum.
Right.
Then we, and the, the select board will provide administrative calendar oversight for for the activities.
Yeah.
It's just a thought.
Yeah.
Or you can bring it back another year.
What was that?
Or you can bring it back another year.
Okay. For, for a second, I thought you said town meeting, I'm like, town meeting, it's like, okay, yep.
So...
Jeez, this is, this is from twenty, twenty twelve.
Yep. So I have a question, has the cultural council asked us to cover for them for, for scheduling, for the? Not that I'm aware of.
Has the cultural council asked us what?
For, for assistance, or, or in terms of the, uh, common usage?
No, they did, they did, they did not ask for help. I, I, given their anticipated, um, given the likelihood that they're, that they could become defunct at the end of the month, I took the initiative to, uh, to bring this matter to the board about the, um, the, the delegated, um, scheduling authority. That, that to me was the, um, was the, was the gap. I didn't, I didn't, just wanted to make sure that it was clear where that resided with, um, in the eventuality that the, that the cultural council goes defunct. It's like, and I spoke to Gina, I, I told her I intended to do that, and she said, that makes sense. I didn't, I didn't want it to surprise her.
So, I'm gonna recommend that we just add a second bullet that says, select board admin assistant shall provide calendar support to the cultural council. Then in the event that we don't have a cultural council, it makes it really easy that she just still has the calendar.
Mm-hmm.
And then the rest of this, as far as I'm concerned, is just good practice. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this with that one adjustment.
Second.
Okay, um, for, uh, for discussion, I just wanna make sure I'm thinking this through, is that, so, the cultural council will, um, will just coordinate with, with Karen and make sure that, that-
There's no scheduling.
That we're informed.
Well, well, the cultural council's responsible for approving events on the common.
Mm-hmm.
But they'll inform her so that she can maintain a calendar for, for their pleasure.
Right, and then, and then if something happens and the cultural council goes defunct, there's a calendar that we have access to.
And for any, and for any, um, board that doesn't have a quorum, functionally, their responsibilities revert to us anyway. So, that takes care of it.
Yeah, and then, if the cultural council is active, does that mean that, um, all the scheduling has to go through them? I just wanna make sure I-
I would, I would say it does. I would say that they would be responsible for scheduling.
Yeah.
Including stuff that people may bring to us for scheduling, if it's something that happens on the, on the common. We, we redirect it to them.
Mm-hmm.
With a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I guess tech- technically, if we ever wanted to schedule something and we didn't want to go through them, we could always award ourselves the authority to do that, but that would be-
We do actually have the authority to do that.
But that would be, that would be stepping on toes, and I wouldn't wanna do it.
As a, as a courtesy to our committees and our volunteers, who would say, hey, do you have any plans for this date?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We wanna make sure about that.
So...
It's just, the third bullet here, erection of any scaffolding or temporary structures. It's like, how does that get approved? Or is that something, someone says, I wanna do something, and if it involves scaffolding-
It says by joint permit.
Building inspector, the police, and the fire chief.
Oh, permit, okay. Yeah, I'll learn to read someday. All right, I think I am good here. All right. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of, um, that's like, Beth, could you read the new, the additional bullet point again?
Sure, select board administrative assistant shall provide calendar support to the cultural council.
All right, thank you. Um, all in favor of approving the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, town, the, uh, policy for the town common and mall, um, as, um, as amended, uh, with the additional bullet point by Beth, please say aye.
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 All right. And then, all right, and that takes care, and that takes care of scheduling. And so that brings us to our... What's that?
Sorry.
Oh, I may, I may have stuck it in somewhere else in the pile. It's okay.
All right, now the last one, Barron versus Kalenda, the Southborough decision. So, uh, the... So, I, I discussed this with Kelly last week, I believe, and the, my understanding, and Kelly, keep me honest here, is that the, um, the select board is not required to offer a public comment period at any of its meetings.
That is correct.
Should it decide to offer public comment, uh, then at that, and by public comment, I mean, uh, a, an openish forum where people may comment on whatever matter suits their fancy, am I, is that right?
Yes.
And in that event, the select board has very limited power to constrain or otherwise control the speech of the residents who are speaking in this, uh, public comment section of the meeting.
Let me put that a different way.
Yes, thank you.
You have the authority under the laws of the common law, on the constitution of the common law, to put limits on public comment. However, you cannot restrict the language used during that.
Okay.
You cannot control content, you cannot control any type of, you, you just, you can't control what they say, or how they say.
Okay, but we could control how long they have to say it?
Yes, you can determine the time, the place, the amount of, uh, times they're allowed to speak. That, that you can, there are certain restrictions that can be placed on that.
Mm-hmm, okay. And I think in general, we have not, uh, since I've been on the board, we have not had those on the agenda.
Correct.
And then, uh, with regards to the, um, the, with regards to, uh, discussion around the, um, agenda items on the meeting, it is, um, the, the board is within its rights to, um, to entertain, uh, no comment from the floor.
That is correct.
And that if the, um, though the board does have the option to, um, to seek, for want of a better term, yeah, expert opinion on a matter that may be before the board?
Mm-hmm, or input.
Yes, based on the, at, at the chair's discretion. Okay.
And then, um, it sounds like while we cannot regulate civility, rule, or disparaging comments, or content-based criticisms, but we can have content-neutral items inclusive of defining what segment of the meeting would have public comment. Individual speaking time limits.
Mm-hmm.
Not allowing people to speak over others, and keeping everything not, at least peaceable and not disorderly.
That's correct. So I have the decision in front of me at page twenty-four, the last paragraph, it says, so this was, this all turned around civility. This-
Right.
This person came to the court and said, I want you to, we want you to declare their public comment policy unconstitutional because of the civility portion of it. It limited when they could say, speak, how long they could speak, but then they attempted to limit content and in the public comment portion of their meeting. This was not participation in an agenda item, this was an open, after their meeting closed, open public comment opportunity to speak with the board. They attempted to limit the content. And so the court said that the civility portion of it was unconstitutional.
Mm-hmm.
However, they also said, this, this is not to say that restrictions cannot be imposed on public comment sessions consistent with Article sixteen and nineteen, that's what they're speaking on the constitution, or the Declaration of Rights. Reasonable time, place, manner restrictions could include designated when and where a public comment session may occur, how long it might last, the time limits for each person speaking during the public comment section, and rules preventing speakers from disrupting others or removing those who do. So you still have the power of removal if the meeting becomes disrupted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if people are talking over each other, you can also require them to, to speak directly to the chair and not to speak across the room to each other. If you, if you choose to add in a public comment section, if you want to get input from the attendance in the audience during a meeting, it would be in the board's interest to have a, a formula, um, from which people may participate. So if you decide we're going to get input from the, from the people in attendance, having place, each person that's interested in commenting may speak one time, or two times, or three times, whatever you wanna make it, for X number of minutes, they must remain on topic. Whatever agenda item that they're discussing, they must remain on topic. And when the input session is closed, every, you know, everybody gets to speak once or twice, depends on what you want. Once that comment period is closed, comments are done, they're just done, and, and no more comments will be accepted from, from the, uh, from those in the town.
Are you aware of any towns having policy to that?
For during the regular, since, since Kalenda, yeah.
Yeah.
There are, towns are doing this all over the place, because it's like the flag policies-
No, but having, no, but having a policy, well, I guess, yeah.
The reason the flag policy is they're going all over, across the entire state, is in the Boston case, which is a very recent case. So, that's why towns are now adopting flag policies. So it's just the same thing. So this is happening all over the state. There actually are towns that have these in place already that have the same civility rules that need to be updated. It's one of the form of research I was coming across in town policies where they limit what can be said, and that's, that's what this whole case is about. You can't limit content, uh, the way somebody expresses themselves to you.
So we should come up with a policy, then?
Mm-hmm.
For how we should act?
Yeah. And how you want, how you wanna include participation. I know that hearing from the, um, attendees has always been important to you, because you frequently say, but I wanna hear what people wanna say. So you just put a procedure in place, like at the town meeting. This is, you know, you get up there and, and, is it Gilmeister?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Gilmeister says, these are the rules, this is how we're gonna proceed, and you're gonna follow the rules, and then everybody knows what they can and can't do, and what to expect, and everybody's treated the same across the board, and that's key. Everybody has to be treated equal.
Yeah.
So if you wanna, I would say you wanna consider when you're gonna allow input, what are you gonna be your criteria to allow input, and then what, what is, or and or, what is the criteria to engage in the input? How many times you get to speak. You're not allowed to, like, I read one today, they're not allowed to repeat themselves. If you said it once and you come up and say it again, you're done, you're done.
Mm-hmm.
You cannot repeat yourself.
Yeah, you can't just come back and say it again.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of stuff out there. Do you wanna think about it and get back to me with what your thoughts are, or do you wanna?
Question, there's, um, I'm thinking that there is a distinction between what I will call general input from the attendees and the select board inviting expert input, in that, for expert input, the select board can say, you have domain expertise, um, and just as an example, um, in here, um, Mr. Kelleher is, uh, has, is serving on the Board of Health, and so if we have a question about Board of Health matters, we could ask him to come up here and, and represent his experience there, and that's, we would not have, and since no one else in the room has experience, no, if no one else in the room had experience-
So you're not opening it up to the floor, yeah, that's something that could be in the policy, that when you're looking for technical information from somebody who has that expertise. That is not opening it up to the floor for, for-
Yeah, I, I wanna make sure that, that there, there's a distinction there that we can make.
Yeah, you can do that anyway, though.
Yeah.
So are you gonna suggest you're gonna come up with sample draft policy files?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that we-
Or would you like to?
Would I like to come up with a policy? I'd like to snap my finger and have it come up. It's like, I, I, I don't think this is a, I don't think we need to solve the policy issue tonight. Um, I mean, we're, we're doing okay for time, so if there's interest in that, but then again, I think some people might just wanna say, Tom didn't talk too much, let's declare victory and go home. And so, we can, we can, we can come back to this at, at a future meeting after people have had a chance to think about it. What, what do you two feel like?
I would like, my personal opinion is if Kelly could get draft policy, and then we discuss it at a future
Future meeting.
Meeting.
Yep.
And make edits.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds good to me.
We're out of agenda, so I'm just gonna request that we put on a future agenda. Removing the sign on the common.
Yes, I've, uh, I was approached by Kermit about that, and it's, he reminded me that I had not, um, that I had collected most of the information. I just haven't sat down and said, are we good enough to remove it yet?
Yeah, so let's just put it on an agenda, and let's.
Yeah, let's.
Make a decision.
Yeah, let's, um, all right, let's try, let's see if we can get that in, because if we can make a decision before the end of the month, we might be able to, actually, the ground's going to be frozen. We're not going to make it this year.
The twenty-first?
Yeah.
I'll get it out of there by then.
It's like, well, let's put, let's put it on, let's put it on the pile of things to be discussed, and if the, if the agenda for the twenty-first looks, um, favorable, we can try and squeeze it in.
Do you have a hundred percent, I, I, a hundred percent of feedback I've seen is getting gone. It's, it's a hundred percent of feedback. If you're going to replace it, replace it with something nicer looking that's in, in, in tune with the, with the, with the age of the common.
That's, that, that was my impression also. I just needed to.
So if you want to get it gone, add another, add another meeting.
Yes, no, I just, I, I need, I needed the opportunity to.
Drive their truck up the entire road to the hotel.
Yeah, I was, I was.
Now I'm going to tell the agenda, we can just say we're not going to replace it at this time.
No, I just, I just wanted to go back and make sure that that's where we were, because my memory, I didn't trust my memory enough to say, yeah, we, anyway.
Well, yeah, but we don't want to actually talk about it, but I, I think that if you have it on the next agenda, that it could be solved pretty quickly.
Okay. All right. Could you, uh, let Karen know that, please? Thank you.
By the end of a night.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, thank you, Brad. Beth, did you second that? I didn't hear.
I did second that.
Excellent, all right. Uh, motion to adjourn at seven twenty-five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are done.